Benomo?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Dr. Childs?
Present.
Mr. Early?
Here.
Mr. John?
Present.
Mr. Mahalik?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Wallace is out of town. And Mr. Giannic?
Here.
Thank you. Announcement of executive sessions held as follows. February 10, 2015 personnel. February 26, 2015 personnel and negotiations. Public announcements and recognition. Dr. Butler, would that be you?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. It's a pleasure to bring forward to the board and to our audience three special recognitions this evening. First of all, regards to Coaches for Cancer. Coach Mike Joseph, our head boys' basketball coach. Spearheaded an effort to bring in over $6,000 for this cause, Coaches for Cancer. This was an all-time high for the district. And I think what's special about it, it was definitely a school-wide effort, a community effort to bring in money for this cause. And although Mike cannot join us this evening, he's actually scouting as the boys are participating in a district championship on Saturday. We wanted to bring this forward to the board for recognition tonight and thank Mike for his efforts. Also this evening, it's my pleasure to recognize Ellen McBride and Marie Ernst. I know Ellen's here this evening. I'll have you come forward. Marie was unable to attend this evening, but these two fine professionals have been recognized by the Pearl, with the Pearl Award. Pearl standing for professional excellence, achievement, role model, responsibility, and leadership. Honoring outstanding business and professional women in the community. Ellen, of course, is not only nurse at the Hazleton Area High School, but the head nurse throughout the district, does a great job. Really, Ellen and Marie just represent the epitome of what this award stands for. So Ellen, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. With us this evening, we have an adorable little girl, Aubriella Marzicano, and her parents, Shannon and Anthony. And I believe Grandma is also there, so if you folks would come forward, please. That's fine. Isn't she beautiful? Aubriella was afflicted with a rare and life-threatening form of meningitis that required, obviously, significant medical treatment and expenses. And I'm here to tell you that Bob Mahalik and Steve Hahn stepped up in a noble fashion and organized a benefit concert for Aubriella. And through the efforts of Liam List, a tremendous young performer, the folks at Lee Heit and Kia, Janine LaSant at Channel 13, and Mrs. Podlesny and her wonderful teachers and support staff at West Hazleton Elementary Middle School. This benefit concert was a huge success, a huge success. And in fact, raised almost $5,000 to help the family with their medical expenses. I'm happy to tell you that the prognosis for Aubriella is very, very good. And with great pleasure, I present this check to the family.
Doc, if I just may add one thing, well, maybe a few things. It was so interesting, a good friend of mine and the emcee of the event was Jeff Walker, known mostly by Jumpin' Jeff Walker from KRZ. He spent 15 minutes with Mom and Dad, and he said to me, they were two of the most amazing people. Now Jeff has probably done 1,000 fundraisers in his time. He said, "That Mom and Dad are two of the most amazing people." You talk to Mom and Dad, you know, I mean, they're obviously very young, we're proud, you're graduates of this district. But, I mean, just the way they've handled this situation. Certainly, I know myself, I don't know that I could have done it. But you talk to Dad, and he talks about stem cell and all the hope that there is. I mean, she's obviously beautiful, and she's very, very typical. But the hope of her just leading the most unbelievable life and fulfilling all her dreams, you guys are just awesome. So, but we also have to thank Dr. Antonelli, because I spoke to him December 26th, it was the day after Christmas. In fact, Liam is the one that read this online, contacted me, said, "Could we do something for this girl?" So it really started with this 13-year-old boy. I called Dr. Antonelli on December 26th, and he said, "Whatever, you tell me whatever we gotta do, and we will do this." And that's who you are and what you are, and that's why I will vote every single time, I know you're ready for retirement, but I will vote every single time for you not to go, because you put this community, you've put these kids, and you put all of our students first always. And he said, "Absolutely, whatever we have to do, we'll figure this out." And Jocelyn, yeah, I love you, thank you, because they are worth every bit of everything. So, thank you so much, and we'll see you.
Thank you.
See you soon.
At this time, we will have a brief presentation from Mr. Patron on the graduation requirements. Thank you, Dr. Antonelli. I'm Rockler Patron, principal of Hazleton Area High School. With me, I also have one of our assistant principals at Hazleton Area High School, Mr. Tony Constant. I thought it was important to go over some of the new mandates for graduation, which really begins with our current sophomores, the class of 2017, as it pertains to Keystone exams, which is our new state assessments. We've been doing the Keystones for the last four years, but we are one of the schools in the state that actually did pilot this program when our current seniors were in eighth grade. So what are Keystone exams? They are, there are three precursors for the exams. One is the Algebra I course. We have a literature exam, which we take after our sophomore English course, and a biology exam, which is taken after the second course in biology. Could be freshman year, or could be sophomore year. And algebra is really based on your math level. It can be taken as early as eighth grade. What's important for me to get across to everyone, we did give a brochure to all school board members, our superintendent and so forth, and we're going to leave many of the brochures here for anyone that would like to take one with them. If there's a place we can put that, you can let me know. Dr. Butler can, we'll leave them here on the podium. We have some there too as well. What's important to get across of our students is, starting with the class of 2017, which is our current sophomore, if they do not pass the Keystone exams, each Keystone has two modules, you need 1,500 in order to pass each module. If you do not pass the court, or you do pass the course but do not pass the Keystone exam, which means you reach proficiency, you have a chance to retake the exam. And we're going to come to the school board next month with a new program of studies and talk about remediation courses. Because if the student does not pass the course the first time, we want to be able to give them a second chance at that course and at the Keystone exam, so they have a better chance of passing. Because if they don't, I cannot hand them a diploma until they do reach proficiency and/or an alternate plan. And the alternate plan is called the project-based assessment, which is done online, which I'm going to have Mr. Constant explain.
Good evening. As Mr. Patron stated, there is a new initiative by the state of Pennsylvania. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has developed a project-based assessment, the PBA. It is aligned, it is aligned with the modules for each of the Keystone exams, Algebra I, Biology, and the Literature Keystone exam. For students who are unable to demonstrate proficiency on the Keystone exam or Keystone exam model, uh, module, excuse me. Successful completion of a PBA, project-based assessment, that is aligned to the Keystone exam or Keystone exam module, on which a student did not demonstrate proficiency, uh, excuse me, proficiency shall satisfy the Chapter IV Keystone exam graduation requirements. And that is Chapter IV of the Pennsylvania State Code. Now, the project-based assessment system shall be administered by schools and scored by statewide review panels. Let me explain this just a little bit. The panels are composed of evaluators. The evaluators make up of teachers, principals, and curriculum specialists. And these individuals are assembled by the PDE. So when a project-based assessment is given by the school, the school has no say in the assessment of that project-based assessment. And as Mr. Patron stated, the three modules, excuse me, the six modules, the three tests overall, if a student tests non-proficient under any of them, let's say in Algebra I Keystone, whether it be Module 1 or Module 2, they will take a project-based assessment based upon that model, excuse me, that module. When a, what is a school's responsibility then, in terms of the oversight of the student's PBA work? When a student begins a project-based assessment, that student will be assigned a tutor by the assessment coordinator at the school, whoever that may be. That will be the designee of the principal. The tutor provides content area support. That's instruction under eligible content of the module. As the student is progressing through the project, for test security purposes, a test administrator or tutor must be present when students are working on the PBAs, the project-based assessments. So these are, these are greatly detailed, greatly entrenched in something that is going to be extremely important over the next few years. And as stated, starting with 2017, the current sophomore class, this is when this goes into effect. So for that class, the project-based assessment must be completed by January of 2017. One more fact. The PBA, the project-based assessment, will indeed bring about an end to the graduation project as we know it. So in review, very quickly, these projects are aligned with each of the modules for the Keystone exams. The project-based assessment system, again, shall be administered by schools and scored by statewide review panels.
So that brings us to what we need to do as a school to help our students achieve proficiency at all three levels. And we're going to institute remediation courses beginning next year. So if we take literacy, for example, student takes the literacy exam, passes the course in our high school and receives a credit, but it does not reach proficiency, we're going to give a remediation course called Literacy Skills. That's with the PA Corps, that will help that student take the test again and hopefully reach proficiency. After two tries, the student may begin the PBA. With one exception, if you're a Career Center student or a CTC student, you only have to take the Biology one time before beginning your PBA. And that's because, of course, those students taking more and more of their time with shops and more credits toward their shops. But other than that, we need to prepare our students. So we will be adding courses to the program of studies, and we will do everything we can to help our students reach proficiency. They're estimating anywhere between 10 to 16 hours per module if you do have to take the PBA. They did pilot this out in Pittsburgh, we did talk to some of those students, and one student quoted, "I wish I would have passed the Keystone exam, because I never want to have to go through the PBA again." So it is quite time-consuming. That's really the basis for the Keystone exams. Questions?
What happens, Mr. Patron, if somebody doesn't pass the PBA?
That's a good question. We actually have to go back and get them a tutor again. We may have to change the tutor. The, the state does recommend the tutor is a certified teacher in that subject. Of course, they know that may not be possible, and we have to do it all over again.
Is that tutoring done in school district time or is it after school?
Both. We can definitely tutor during school district time. We may be taking students out of their electives to do that, taking some of their teachers off of duty and have them do the tutoring. But it's going to take some time, it's going to take some work, and we gotta do some experimenting, because we're going to be in our first year doing this, of course, next year.
And what happens if they don't go through the PBA successfully?
Well, unfortunately, we cannot hand them a diploma, according to PDE. So we need to continue to tutor them, continue to remediate them, and get them to the point where they can pass.
So in other words, they would get a certificate of attendance?
Correct.
Like New York State?
Correct. And speaking of which, if we have transient students from other states, beginning with the class of 2017, regardless of the amount of credits they have, they also need to pass the Keystone exam in order for us to hand them a diploma.
Mr. Patron, how about for this year and next year, as far as?
They will, under, under the class of 2015 and 16, they're under the old system, they're grandfathered in. So they will continue with their graduation projects, continue their, their requirements of 28 credits, and then they will receive a diploma.
I'm hoping that we will get frequent follow-up in terms of how our students are doing.
Well, we will definitely do that. That's why we will come to you in March. We're going to ask you to, to approve Biology Skills and Literacy Skill courses, have teachers certified in those subjects to teach, because we need to remediate our students, we need to get past the, the language barrier, and we have to do everything we can to help our students achieve success, so that we can give them a diploma. Okay, I'm going to leave brochures here. If you want to get them, Tony, I'll leave them on the podium for anyone that would like to take one with them.
Thank you, Mr. Patron.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, public comment directed to the board on agenda items only. No one? All right. This time, we'll approve the board minutes from the regular Board meeting of January 26th. Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve the Treasurers' report, January? Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the Treasurers' report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
All right, then at this time, I'll turn the program over to Dr. Antonelli.
Items 52 and 41 are removed from the agenda. 52 and 41. Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 12 with one motion. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Items number 1 through number 12, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Special education, ESL, alternative education, approve items 13 through 21 with one motion. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 13 through 21, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Nutrition, recommend board approve the cafeteria transfers, new hires as listed below. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 22, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, as per the discussion in exec session on number 20, I believe that was going to be amended to say yearly.
Annual, correct.
Annually, yes.
We voted on 22, we're on 23.
Transportation, recommend board approve school bus route changes.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 23, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Technology, recommend board approve the purchase of Skyward Student Information System to be implemented beginning the 2015-16 school year.
We need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments on 24?
Yeah, I just want to state that several years ago, this district put a lot, a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort, sent teachers, administrators, trainings, boot camps, they were called at the time. Some even went to Florida, I remember. Millions of dollars put into Power School, and now we're doing this again, just a few years later. I will vote no until we, until we turn around and get those books that we tabled a couple of weeks ago. I don't know how this helps kids, I don't know how this does anything. We have a working system that is still in its infancy. And, and we've got a tennis court that, that is even, not even playable, but we're going to put money into this. I'm voting no.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there any need to do this right now, or is this something that could be done once we finalize our budget?
It's too late.
Mr. Early, I'm speaking just for Mr. Briggs, from what he said at his committee meeting, that same question was asked. And in order to implement it from the start of the school year, it would need to be purchased, the training would need to be scheduled over the summer, because I believe they have to run two parallel systems initially. They're going to still schedule in the Power School no matter what, and click the switch basically at the start of the school year and run on the Skywards.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
For 24, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No votes are Mr. Early?
Correct.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes, sir.
Any other no votes on this side?
Me.
Down this way, Mr. Benomo?
Me.
Okay, motion fails.
Approve items 25 and 26 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 25 and 26, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, recommend board appoint the following athletic coaches.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 27, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items 28 through 30 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 28 through 30, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Finance, recommend board adopt the attached resolution authorizing and securing approximately $10 million of the school district's general obligation bonds, Series A of 2015, as presented by bond council.
We do have Attorney Enz Domgard is here, and Brian Bradley from RBC. If there are any questions, the first motion here is for new money. We don't plan on borrowing 10 million, this is just an upside to give us some cushion. This is to pay for the remainder of the construction of Maple Manor, and also to do some capital projects that we've been discussing in our budget meetings.
We need a motion and a second first.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Questions or comments now?
My, my only comment is I want to thank Mr. Bradley. I've worked with you in several districts, you're phenomenal. You save a lot of districts money, your reputation's stellar, I could tell you that. So I just thank you for working closely with us. I mean, obviously, we need every, every cent that we can find, so thank you. And thank you also for your commitment to our community, your company.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
31, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board adopt the attached resolution authorizing and securing approximately $11,610,000 of the school district's general obligation bonds, Series B of 2015, as presented by bond council for the purposes of refunding.
Mr. Bradley, if you could quickly just say what we're refunding and what the savings are approximately that we're looking at?
Sure, we're refunding the $2,010,000 bond issue, and currently, based on the amount of rate of savings, there's over $515,000, and that's ten of all costs, and that's a three percent of the loan.
We need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments now? Mr. Reba?
32, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the attached resolutions for the sale of Hazleton Area School District delinquent real estate tax liens with Commonwealth Tax Strategies as the serving agent pending approval from Attorney Slusser.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We do have Attorney Joe Maschinsky is here, and Darryl Boich, I don't want to... From Commonwealth Tax Strategies, we did meet with them, and we did do this program in the past a few years ago. Then we stopped it, we're looking to get back into it. It basically sells our delinquent real estate taxes and gets paid upfront. The first year entering it, which would be this coming year, we actually get a windfall in the first year, and then pretty much maintains closely what we've been getting moving forward. Anything to add, or any questions from the board?
Gentlemen, I would like to ask you, in front of all the other board members, when we had that meeting that morning, I asked you if there's a possibility we could end up negatively, and I think you guys said, "Highly improbable." I would just like to hear you say that. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
We did do a motion in a second, yes.
Any other comments? Mr. Reba?
Okay, number 33, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the resolution regarding the withdrawal of the appeal-
Recommend board approve the resolution regarding the withdrawal of the appeal on the gun range.
Second.
Mr. Reba? I'm sorry, questions or comments?
Have they taken this off the table?
I have to defer to Attorney Slusser on this one.
Attorney Slusser, just regarding number 34, has that been taken off the table? Looking for the permit for that gun range?
No, that, this is a resolution of the appeal, the appeal is going to be withdrawn based on the proposal for resolution that was presented to the board several months ago and accepted by the Board Executive Session. This resolution embodies that agreement. To answer your question, they're continuing on with the range.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
34, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 35 through 45 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Keeping in mind, that would exclude 41. Mr. Reba?
Numbers 35 through 45, excluding number 41, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on A, 45A.
No on 45A?
We have a no vote from Mr. Mohalik and from Mr. Early. Any other no votes on any items 35 to 45? Okay, ayes have it, motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items 46 through 52, excluding 52 with one motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 46 through 51, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 53 through 67 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to just comment that I recognize amongst these, how many retirees here, so many familiar names, and you'll be sorely missed.
I'd also like that, because there's some names later on in the agenda too, and I know some of them personally, because they worked for me. But to all of you, I wish you a long, healthy, and happy retirement. You certainly deserve it. Working in public education isn't always the easiest thing to do, but you're a credit to the district, so good luck.
And I would concur, they are all. Again, I would concur, they certainly, all are distinguished and dedicated educators, and you'll be very, very difficult to replace. So again, thank you for your tremendous service to the students of this district.
Dr. Antonelli and Mr. Chapman, I'd like to add to it. I had the privilege to work with some of these teachers, and this is a time of the year I really hate to see come, because we're losing some of our most valuable and experienced teachers. But hopefully, we're opening the door up for more younger teachers with more vim and vigor, and maybe newer techniques. But I hate to see some of these people retire, because not only are they good teachers, but they've been very good friends of mine.
Amen. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just have to obviously say something, because this-
Of course you do, Mr. Reba.
This is sort of a shock to see these names. I mean, man, I have so much respect. Some of these people I've worked with side by side, and, phew, this is a true loss. I mean, obviously, I second the sentiments of wishing you health and all the enjoyment that comes with this, but, and I'm grateful to have worked with these teachers, because they certainly have paved a way for me and my passion for educating students. So thank you on behalf of this board and this entire district.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers 53 through 67, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 68 through 78 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 68 through number 78, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, at this time, we'll take any one that has anything to talk about on non-agenda items, they can come up. Non-agenda items? No? Anything else from the board up here?
Jim, I just have, I mean, the headline in today's standard speaker obviously has generated a lot of phone calls. People want to know, I thought this board voted to set the entry requirements for the Academy of Sciences, and now, obviously, in the paper, it's saying that we're revisiting it. I know I've missed some meetings due to, you know, some family issues, but I think we need to put it out to the public. You know, we came to this agreement, we assured these parents that these are requirements, these are what the kids have been working towards, and now, I don't know how this article got in, but-
As far as I know, for the coming year, there's going to be no changes, but maybe Dr. Childs could enlighten us a little bit on that. I agree with you on that.
I didn't see the article, so I apologize, and I don't know anything about it. However, I think it's, there's a difference of philosophies on this board perhaps, and certainly within the community. My understanding, when Mr. Mohalik initially made the proposal for this magnet school and for other magnet schools, was that we were looking for individuals who very likely, or many times, would not ever have an opportunity to express their skills and their interests, and so we were looking for people who had the ability to handle the, to handle the magnet school, at the same time, individuals who might not necessarily be the absolute top students in the class. What's developed later on has been this idea that this is a reward. You get a certain level of grade on a test, and all of a sudden, you're able to be at the school. One of the, what was brought to my attention fairly recently, and I think to the attention of others who are in the room, is that the guidance counselor at the academy said, look, I've got 82 applications, 82% of the eighth-grade students at drums are applying for the magnet school. Well, think about that for a minute. Does that mean 82% of the students are good in math and sci, they really want to go into math and science? That's nuts. So what you're dealing with here is a situation where there's a difference in philosophies, and I think this has to be ironed out, not in this setting perhaps, but certainly at some point in time, in the future.
Yeah, the key word there is "in the future," whether it's the near future or a couple years down the road. I would agree with that.
Well, and I don't think, you know, if we're going to look at, you know, in the paper, it said, you know, we're trying to get more minorities into the school, and I know that program or that committee that was set up was designed to do that, but I was not under the assumption it was looking at rewriting the entry requirements. But if we're going to look at the academy, I think we need to look at our AP classes in the high school. There's more minority students in that academy than there is in the AP classes at the high school. Just, I've asked for some representative samples, you know, we've got 6.5% in one class, 0 in another class, 8% in another class, but yet, the academy, we have 20%. So if we're going to look at this, you know, and try and increase minority populations in these advanced classes, you know, or advanced schools, then I think we need to look across the district, not just at the Academy of Sciences building.
Any other comments? Then I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Meeting adjourned.